We'll open with a flag. Flag. I applaud you ladies who have assisted the fight in the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. I'd like to end for a moment in silence for the line of duty death of the Chief Daney of Tennessee County. There's a couple responding to a call this morning, a cardiac call. Roll call.
Yeah.
Pallister? Barber?
Here.
Barber. Billitier?
Here.
Ronder?
Here.
Chalmers?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Gill?
Here.
Glass?
Here.
Badig? Lap?
Here.
Astrilla? Mayor?
Here.
McCartan? Cardy? Rogaki? Rogers? Santoro?
Here.
Shaw? Smith?
Here.
Scaffold?
Here.
Striker?
Here.
Sapanic?
Here.
Williams? Wiseman? And Zumreck?
Here.
All right, the farm is present.
Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Worms Council. There are a couple of items on our agenda this evening. The first item of which is the application of Mercy EMS for an emergency operating certificate in the town of Concord and the village of Springville. This is made pursuant to Public Health 3010-1C. In terms of procedures tonight, we're going to first hear from the petitioner of Mercy EMS. Its representatives also. Council members will be permitted to ask questions of the petitioner. Following the petitioner's presentation, other persons may be heard. I request that any persons that wish to be heard after the petition limit their statements to those that are not cumulative in nature. What this means is you must refrain from repeating the previously stated information. Council members will be permitted to ask questions of any speaker that does come up. If you start to repeat what's already been stated, you'll be questioned and asked to step away from the podium if you continue. We will impose a five-minute maximum on each person speaking. After all other persons have concluded their statements, the petitioner will be permitted to speak in closing. Council members will be permitted to ask questions of the petitioner once again. Upon conclusion of that closing statement, if any, by the petitioner, the submissions will be closed. All statements must be made from this podium. Please identify yourself before speaking, keeping in mind that we have a stenographer that's making a public record. Please include your name, spell your last name, and your address. The council will then consider the application and make a determination. Now, it's nice to see all this attention here. I'm really glad that everybody came out. This is an important thing that we're doing tonight. But I also ask that we remain with the farm. All right? We have a lot of business to take care of. There's a lot of people that want to talk. We want to hear as a council. So we have some respect for everybody who might be talking. Allow them to make their statements. We respect the limited statements, and we'll get through this night, hopefully not too late. This is a meeting of a deliberative body, and disruptions cannot be allowed. So again, I ask for your cooperation as we proceed. For the record, the council is in pursuit of the following. One, the application of Mercy EMS dated September 1st, 2015. Number two, the supplemental materials submitted by Mercy EMS's attorney to the Department of Health and the council on September 2nd, 2015. Number three, the minutes of the meeting of the council on September 2nd, 2015. Number four, the correspondence of Burton Shafie Hospital of September 2nd, 2015. Number five, the correspondence of the Department of Health dated September 9th, 2015. Number six, the correspondence of council's attorney to petitioner's attorney dated September 8th, 2015, together with the council's request for additional and clarifying information and data attached to such correspondence. Number seven, the correspondence of petitioner's attorney to the council's attorney dated September 15th, 2015. Number eight, the correspondence of council's attorney to petitioner's attorney dated September 17th, 2015. Number nine, the correspondence of petitioner's attorney dated September 16th, 2015, together with petitioner's response to the council's request for additional and clarifying information and data. And ten, the correspondence of council's attorney to petitioner's attorney dated September 21st, 2015. Mr. Butler, you presented these documents.
Mr. Chairman, as the council previously directed, all of the submissions made by the petitioner and others, as noted by the secretary, had been received. They've been collated, placed on a CD, and forwarded to the secretary, a copy of which has also been presented to Mercy EMS's attorneys for their records as well. And I would ask that those be included and made part of it. Thank you.
As a note for the record, I've received the conflict of interest declaration by Dr. Anthony Billitier. Are there any others of council who'd like to make a declaration of any conflict? Mr. Chairman.
The Assistant General Manager for Rural Metro Medical Services, and Rural Metro is a current provider in the Springville, so we feel that I have a conflict.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Ronder, CEO of Twin City Ambulance. We have a certificate to operate in the areas affected and want to disclose a potential for any perceived conflict.
Sorry, Dr. Billitier.
Yeah, can I just ask that you read my statement, because I think it's important.
Let me look through the paper.
Can I go back to that?
Yeah, or if I can find it, I can.
The next order of business will be to ask the petitioner to step forward. Do you want to start doing that now while we're looking through the paper? Dr. Billitier.
This was an email correspondence sent on September 17th, and it reads, Chairman Gill, given my role as a Mercy Flight medical director, this electronic communication should serve as official declaration to the Worms Council of any potentially perceived conflict of interest with respect to Mercy Flight's recent petition for a 60-day emergency expansion of operating authority. Please let me know if you have any comments, questions, or concerns. Thanks, Anthony Billitier.
Thank you, Dr. Billitier. Good evening. Good to see you, Chairman Gill. My name is Tim Hannigan, and I represent Mercy EMS. As the council is likely aware, this petition is styled as a petition on behalf of Mercy EMS as a provider. However, as you can certainly appreciate, this petition truly is made on behalf of the town of Concord and the village of Springville, and for those reasons, we will incorporate Mayor Krebs, Supervisor Appolito into our presentation, as well as the presentations of Burton Shafie Hospital representatives, Darlene Schrantz and Dr. Edwin Heidelberger, who are present this evening. In addition, we understand that members of the fire EMS community from Springville are here this evening, and we will likewise incorporate the comments this evening made by Chief Danes of the Springville Volunteer Fire Department into our presentation for this council's consideration. As of right now, I'm merely the MC, so I'm going to turn it over to the lady in charge, and the lady who's definitely in charge, Margie Farantino, and Sister Sheila of the Sisters of Mercy.
Thank you, Tim. I'd like to thank the council on behalf of our team for the opportunity tonight. My name is Margaret Farantino. I'm the Executive Vice President of Mercy Flight Incorporated. I wasn't always that. Like many of you, my EMS career started in 1977 as an EMT. You'll meet the members of our team in a few minutes as they move forward with our presentation, but I'd like to make a special introduction tonight. Sister Sheila Marie Walsh is with us. Sister Sheila Marie is the former CEO of Mercy Hospital Buffalo, who is also a founding member of Mercy Flight, and is one of the three existing members of our corporation along with myself and Doug Baker, our founding president. Mercy Flight Incorporated is a not-for-profit corporation. We have two divisions, Mercy Flight Western New York, the air side, and Mercy EMS, the ground side. I just wanted to make the opening remarks tonight, because there are a few things that many of you have known me over years that are very important to me personally, okay, and to us as an organization. I want to tell you what this is and what it isn't, from our point of view, okay? What this is not, okay, and as we know, these types of procedures and these types of new activities are subject to a lot of conversations and rumors and scuttlebutt whatsoever, but what this is not is an attempt on the power of Mercy Flight Inc. or any of its divisions to execute a hostile takeover of any provider. What this is about, and only about, is for myself and our organization, responding to a request for help from a community and a hospital that I and our organization has
My name is Don Tripez.
worked with or for for over 37 years.
I'm the Director of Medical Operations for Mercy Flight. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to be here tonight and present for our petition.
So from our point of view, that's what it's about. They need help. The philosophy of our organization is if an organization or a community needs help,
I'd like to go through the timeline of events that led us to the point that we are today.
we will do the best we can to provide help.
Our history, as March Farantino alluded to, dates back quite a long time ago with Burton
And that's all I have to say, and I'm sure the rest will come from our team.
Shafie Hospital and the community of Concord and the village of Springville.
Thank you very much. Okay.
All right, now, to coordinate this right now, what we're going to do is use some demonstratives.
And throughout that time, we have continued to provide service from our Air Component Division. Tonight, we're here to discuss the Emergency Operating Authority petition that we submitted.
We've prepared a timeline of events that I think will be illustrative to our presentation and kind of take you through the steps of where we were, where we were on September
And the timeline for that petition really started on 7/29/15.
2nd, and where we are right now.
On 7/29/15, Burton Shafie Hospital received a letter, well, it was dated the 29th, I'm sorry, from their current service provider stating that they were canceling their contract as effective 30 days from that time period.
Don, anecdotally, I'll note that that letter is appended to Mercy Flight's petition that was served on September 1st as Exhibit B to the petition.
Thank you. Additionally, the town of Concord received a letter, and there's a quotation in the town of Concord's letter related to the 911 service in the town of Concord that states, quote, "Not enough to sustain the staffing of a 24-hour ALS vehicle in the area." These letters were received by the hospital on the 3rd of August, at which time the hospital reached out and called Mercy EMS, requesting a phone conference conversation and asking for help at that point. This was not their first ask for help, and I'd like the record to show that. On the 5th of August, the hospital, town, and village representatives requested a meeting with Mercy EMS in Springville, at which time we discussed the options that they may have. Those options began with the conversation of traditional CONs, municipal CONs, those types of events. On the 12th of August, representatives from Mercy EMS and Rural Metro met to discuss what was going on in Springville and offer Mercy Flight's and Mercy EMS's assistance as to how to solve the situation that the town, village, and hospital had brought to us. This, again, was not the first meeting of such, but based on the letters that were received on the 29th, this was. On the 18th, during that meeting on the 12th, Mercy EMS committed to Rural Metro Medical Services that we would take back to Burton Shafie Hospital, the town of Concord, and the village of Springville. Option A, as we call it, and we reference in our timeline, option A being that they resurrect their relationship with each other and find a way to solve that problem. On the 18th of August, we met again with the hospital, the town, and the village representatives, and presented just that. Option A was the first presentation at the table that evening, that afternoon. It was made very clear to us that the relationship was not salvageable due to history, and subsequently, Mercy EMS was asked by all three entities, the town of Concord, the village of Springville, and the hospital, to move forward with a traditional CON process. We had a conference call with Rural Metro Medical Services on the 21st of August, and which we provided back to Rural Metro Medical Services, actually Jay Smith. I could see him there. Jay Smith was on the telephone and explained to him that we had presented option A, and that option A was not suitable for the entities there, and that subsequently notified him officially that we were moving forward with data collection for a traditional CON situation in that community. On the 25th of August, I went down and met with a special meeting of the Springville Fire Chiefs Council. It was that very time when it became very, very clear that this was a much greater situation than what we had ascertained prior to that. The fire chiefs were very passionate and shared their struggles that they continue to have, which you will hear tonight from Chief Danes. On the 25th, that was, again, they described all of the struggles that they had been having and how the situation had been worsening over time. On the 26th, I had a phone conference with representatives from the town and the village, explaining the situation from the night prior, asking them to reach out to their fire chiefs so they could get the information directly from them, as they had been doing. And subsequently, following that, reached out to our legal team to ask, what is a more immediate solution? The fire chiefs had specifically asked that night on the 25th to come up with a more immediate solution than a traditional CON process, as they understood that process would take an extremely long period of time. As a result, on the 31st of August, the town and the village, the town of Concord and the village of Springville, held special meetings in which the resolutions that are appended to our petition were generated and voted unanimously upon by those entities, and they will speak to that this evening. Those resolutions then generated our petition. As part of those resolutions, requested a petition for Emergency Operating Authority. That petition was subsequently filed or prepared and filed 15 hours later with the Department of Health and the Regional Council. And on the 2nd, as you know, New York State Bureau of EMS provided us verbal support of the application, and subsequently, the written support received on the 9th, and then we held the meeting here this evening. So the big, important piece of this that I want to make sure is understood and is clear is never was the intention to end where we are today, okay? The intention, along this entire situation, was to follow the guidance of the traditional CON processes and municipal CONs and those types of scenarios. Unfortunately, as we dove into the information, which we will present this evening, we dove into the information, it became extremely clear how their situation was truly, truly an emergency, as deemed by their village and town boards.
Now, Mr. Tripez's full-time job is actually the Director of Air Operations. He doesn't just come up with this stuff or think of ways to expand and help our brothers and sisters in Springville and the town of Concord. And this is through his Herculean efforts and those of Mercy Flight that we've been able to put this together and provide this information to you. Sure. Will this be part of our record? Will you have copies of it? Yes, Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Council Butler beforehand. We are going to provide copies of this and the subsequent demonstratives that we have to you, and we will have those available for you. As noted on September 1st, we prepared this petition 15 hours after the legislative bodies of the village of Springville and the town of Concord declared an emergency in their area. Now, that declaration isn't like Don or I declaring an emergency. That declaration made by the legislative body governing those areas is entitled to a strong presumption of validity. That presumption, that declaration was compelling for us. It was compelling for Don, and hearing the village deliberate over the problems that they were having in service, the fact that their volunteers couldn't respond during the day and all of the times when the other service provider was not available, it presented an emergency. And I'd like to talk to that emergency right now. Has everyone seen and had opportunity to review the petition? Okay, just for clarity, the two Rural Metro letters to the town of Concord and Burton Shafie Hospital are appended as B and C. Exhibit D is the resolution of the town of Concord declaring an emergency in the town of Concord. Exhibit E is a resolution of the village of Springville declaring an emergency need in the village of Springville. And Exhibits F, G, and H are letters from the various fire service EMS providers within those municipalities. Now, when we were discussing need, and as you know, Public Health Law in Section 3010 states, "Upon express approval of the Department and the appropriate regional emergency medical services council for a maximum of 60 days if necessary to meet an emergency need." That provision, 3010, Sub 1C, is why we're here tonight. For a maximum of 60 days if necessary to meet an emergency need. Now, the State Department of Health at this point has declared that an emergency need exists. They have, as of now, and as was submitted to Council Butler, submitted a letter saying that Mercy EMS has submitted substantial evidence in support of a finding of an emergency need, and they support this application. To expand upon that finding, and this is all directly related to the records contained that we provided to you, and as were relied upon by the village and the town in arriving at their declarations, for 2014, just for some historical perspective, total calls for that year were 821, and the total calls for which the contract provider there was not available was 198. Now, that represents 24% of the total calls run that year. Not very good, but they still made 76%. In 2015, the total calls for the year was 445. The total calls that the provider was not available was 197, representing 44% of the total calls. No, 44% of the total calls not responded to. I will, full disclosure, I'm a volunteer fireman in my hometown, and I can't tell you how a source of pride it is to make sure that we get off the floor with our rigs when we roll. And 44% of the calls in the village of Springville and the town of Concord, that ALS service was unavailable to those residents when they were called. Now, breaking that down to July 2015, that was the month immediately preceding the letters of Rural Metro to the town of Concord and Burton Shafie Hospital. When called in July 2015, they were called 52 times. 23 of those, they were unavailable. And again, you're seeing that parallel 44% number for 2015. And that's over the 24% number that they were unavailable in 2014. There's a gradual, increasing need present there, increasing unavailability of a resource that those residents believe that is going to be available to them when they call 911, just like anybody. Now, in August 2015, the total calls in August 2015, following the July 29th letters to the town of Concord and the Burton Shafie Hospital, 51 calls. Total calls not available, 31, representing 61% of the calls for August 2015 that ambulance was unavailable. Now, if the cashier at Tim Hortons was unavailable for his job 61% of the time, they'd fire him. That is a fireable offense, and I would not want to be one of the 61% of the residents of Springville or the town of Concord calling 911 and hoping that ALS care is there for me and not being able to get it. There's no explanation for that. Now, admittedly and conceitly, I don't have a chart for September 2015. By the time these went to print, those numbers hadn't been tabulated yet, but as of today, from September, from the time that we made our initial petition until right now, the total percentage of calls that the current provider's been unavailable for is 65%. 65%. This is an emergency first response agency providing ALS care, and they're not available. They're not there to render the care that's supposed to be provided. Now, what's not reflected here is the overwhelming burden that this has placed on the volunteer fire EMS providers in that locality. And as a volunteer, these guys and gals can't leave their jobs in the middle of the day all the time to respond to calls. They can't take the excessive man-hours that it would take for them to transport from Burton Shafie up to Buffalo and back for certain trauma patients. 61% in August 2015, 65% September to date, since the date of the petition, since Mercy EMS said, and since the village and the town declared that an emergency existed. There's been no improvement. It's just getting worse. To explain the situation that arose in August 2015 and the situation that currently exists, I call upon Mayor Krebs and Supervisor Appolito to speak to what's going on in their localities now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the council, for allowing us to make this presentation this evening. My name is Bill Krebs. I'm mayor, that's K-R-E-B-S, and I'm mayor of the village of Springville. On August 31st, we had a village board meeting, and the village Board of Trustees passed a resolution authorizing the provision of ambulance and advanced life support services by Mercy EMS, and the application by the village for municipal operating certificate from New York State Bureau of EMS. Right now, you've heard, and you certainly have copies of our resolution, but I want to sort of assure you that the village Board of Trustees and village of Springville went through its due diligence in a rather lengthy meeting. It was about a two-hour meeting, trying to establish the need for such a resolution before we took the vote. Based on the needs and the data reported by the Springville Fire Control, the testimony of our volunteers, the needs of our Burton Shafie Hospital, which is a rural community hospital that is community-owned, it's in our village. I don't think there's another village in your county that has a community-owned hospital in it, but it's in our village, and it's part of our village, and it's owned by our community residents. And based on the reluctance of Rural Metro to provide the needed services to our village, as stated in its letters that you've heard about, the board adopted the resolution to support Mercy EMS and to apply for the municipal operating certificate. Before voting on a resolution, the board established the need. And here are some of the things we discussed, we asked questions about, and the evidence that was presented to us. First of all, the Springville Fire Control provided data showing that Rural Metro had been unavailable 44% of the time this year, and 18.5% of the time over a four-year period. You just heard the updated statistics on that. The Springville Volunteer Fire Department Chief and a dispatcher from our control center, Springville Control, reported that Rural Metro has been problematic over the years by being out of service and/or out of communication with our dispatches. The Springville Volunteer Fire Department Chief reported that Rural Metro service was reported as a recurring problem at the Fire Chiefs Council. Burton Shafie Hospital, which, as I said, is located in our village, very much part of our village, reported the lack of service by Rural Metro was a major problem because it delayed transportation of patients from Burton Shafie Hospital to special care hospitals in Buffalo. And of course, the letters. There was a letter from Rural Metro stating that it was terminating its medical transportation agreement with our hospital. We're the trustees of the village, and we have a letter from the Rural Metro stating it's terminating its service agreement with our hospital. And a letter from Rural Metro to the town of Concord stating it did not know there was a problem, but that Rural Metro is providing service upon availability of a vehicle, and that, and you've already heard the quote, that 911 transports we take in the town of Concord alone are not enough to sustain this level of staffing postponed. In other words, they can't provide the level of staffing that we as a community think is necessary for public safety in our village. So we had one, two, three, four, six... been unavailable forty-four percent of the time this year, and eighteen-point-five percent of the time over a four-year period. You just heard of the updated statistics on that. The Springville Volunteer Fire Department Chief and a dispatcher from our control center, Springville Control, reported that rural metro has been problematic over the years by being out of service and/or out of communication with our dispatchers. The Springville Volunteer Fire Department Chief reported that rural metro service was reported as a recurring problem at the fire chiefs' council. Bertrand-Chafee Hospital, which, as I said, is located in our village, very much part of our village, reported the lack of service by rural metro was a major problem because it delayed transportation of patients from Bertrand-Chafee Hospital to special care hospitals in Buffalo. And of course, the letters. There was a letter from rural metro stating that it was terminating its medical transportation agreement with our hospital. We're the trustees of the village, and we have a letter from the rural metro stating it's terminating its service agreement with our hospital. And a letter from rural metro to the town of Concord stating it did not know there was a problem, but that rural metro is providing service upon availability of a vehicle, and that, and you've already heard the quote, that nine-one-one transports we take in the town of Concord alone are not enough to sustain this level of staffing postponed. In other words, they can't provide the level of staffing that we as a community think is necessary for public safety in our village. So, we had, had it, one, two, three, four, six, six items that we discussed, six items of information, some of the data, some of the testimony. And, you know, trustees, what's the solution? How are we going to provide public safety of our residents in our village? And that's our job, public safety. And so, we had a proposal for Mercy EMS to provide three ambulances for service to our village and town and hospital, and to dispatch those from Springville Control. And for those reasons, the trustees of the village of Springville passed the resolution, that's part of the packet of information that you had. It was done with a lot of diligence, and it was done after a careful extended meeting, just like you're having here tonight, listening to the information. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. Thank you very much for your time.
I have a question. Mr. Mayor?
Do you want to get into the question?
Mark Sapannik, council member. Got it. After the village of Springville declared their emergency, did you or your people identify and subsequently contact any other providers with operating authority in that community?
Did I contact any?
Identify and subsequently contact?
Well, we knew rural metro was...
Did you attempt to identify or contact any other operating?
I did not contact...
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Is there one of your questions from the council? If you just get my attention, that'll fall on.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, can I just, I just want to clarify the date, for from the time they declared the emergency on August thirty-first, did they?
I'm aware of the timeline.
No, 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 was that the question? I just, I didn't hear.
Any questions at any time when there was deficiency in service with another provider that has an operating certificate operating through a county company?
Was that your question?
That's my question.
Okay.
Well, it would, the village of Springville itself, you know, is not in the, does not usually notify people in the healthcare...
Right.
You know, it would be our dispatchers, it would be our fire chief, you know, it's a volunteer fire company, and as far as hands-on, boots-on-the-ground...
I understand, I was just referring to the village board after making their declaration and discovering there was an emergency with EMS care.
No, but we would expect that the people that manage those operations for our village...
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Supervisor Appolito?
Good evening, I'm Supervisor Gary Appolito, town of Concord. I'll try not to be, Appolito's not a bad word, there's so many names. It's E-P-P-O-L-I-T-O.
Is that who I would feel?
Probably not, there's a lot of variations there. First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to question. I also want to thank a group of emergency responders that are here from Concord, East Concord, Morton's Corners, Springville, and my entire town board that's here tonight. I wish to emphasize to you how important an issue this is to the town of Concord. As supervisors of the town of Concord the past ten years, I've been made acutely aware of the problems involved in providing emergency services to a seventy-square-mile town. In fact, we are the largest town in terms of area in Erie County. The village of Springville, located in the southern part, is approximately three miles square, contains approximately fifty percent of the town's population of eighty-five hundred. Located in the township are two nursing homes, a twenty-five-bed hospital that provides medical care to Wyoming, Erie, and Catterhouse counties, a major ski resort, and two county parks. Also, a major four-lane highway, Route thirty-nine, as well as a heavily-traveled state highway thirty-nine traverses the town. Logistically, we're about thirty, thirty-five miles from the city of Buffalo. I'm attempting to make three major points. One, we are responsible for a very large geographic area. Two, we are a heavily, heavy user of emergency medical services. And three, response time is crucial, especially in such a large area. I ask you and the board, consider if one of your loved ones was out there needing medical help, what would you do? If that was your loved one, how would you feel? So, I ask you to consider that when you consider tonight's petition. One of my major responsibilities as supervisors is to make sure my community receives the best emergency and medical care possible. We receive excellent fire protection from four fire departments. Fire protection's not our problem. Because I meet with various fire chiefs on a regular basis, I have become made painfully aware of the problems with our present primary responder for the village and environments during especially daytime hours. In fact, in two thousand eleven, the town hesitated to sign a new contract with this organization for several months until we could receive input from the fire departments. That agreement was only enacted after it became obvious Springville or Concord at that time had no other options. Tonight, Concord comes to you for your help. Our responder, despite its contentions, has been providing deplorable service to our community. One only need to read the Buffalo News to see that this profit or corporation continues to have difficulty providing adequate response, times even as big as client, the city of Buffalo. Excuses like elected officials do not understand the concept of triage, and we need to educate them. I'm sorry, but that's insulting. I would like to suggest that they begin consolidating their services. This present business model does not work, it certainly does not work for the town of Concord. In conclusion, as far as Concord is concerned, providing a car on an availability basis and then doing so less than fifty percent of the time is not living up to its agreement with the town. It is our opinion that this level of service in the past and more so today jeopardizes the health and safety of our community. Discussions with them over the years have led to only slight improvements in service, but only for a period of time. Soon, they return to previous levels. Personally, I find its spokesperson's contentions that he was unaware of the problems as being extremely disingenuous. Isn't one definition insanity, doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results? This is precisely what we are doing over the years by continuing to negotiate with this provider. And as the chief elected official of the town of Concord, on behalf of my entire community, I call on you to do the right thing. Our community has other options we need to pursue. We should not be held hostage. This is too important to let any political considerations and any petty grievances get in the way. We are in a crisis situation here. We cannot keep this going, considering going, we are, we are. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you, to speak to you, and I beg you to do the right thing.
One question.
Brian Broner, councilman. First question, you're still operating under the two thousand eleven agreement on an extended basis. That agreement contains three provisions which enable termination of it. One is a current thirty-day intent not to renew. One is a default defined in your agreement as urgent public need. And one is a sixty-day notice of breach with time for the provider to cure...
It was thirty days, thirty?
The notice of breach is sixty days.
On the breach, okay, I got you, I understand.
Has the town of Concord provided any written notice of any of those things to its provider?
Because of that time, we had no other options. I believe it had to be exercised back in March, contract was March of sixteen, something like that, original contract. The way I'm reading it...
No communication's been sent to the provider to cure the breach of contract, you're alleging?
No, not at this time.
Is there anybody else? At this time, we'd call Darlene Schrantz and Dr. Edwin Heidelberger on behalf of Bertrand-Chafee Hospital.
Chairman and members, right, how's it going? You want us to gather? Chairman and members of council, my name is Dr. Ed Heidelberger, I'm the vice president of medical affairs at the hospital, responsible for quality assurance, among other things. And I'm coming here in support of Mercy EMS's application to provide services to the village of Springville and town of Concord, of which we are a part. We've reviewed our data, and as you know, this timeline that was presented was very nice to bring everybody up to speed of what's going on. But since that time, you know, we've looked at our data, and we know that, on average, we looked at all the data from two thousand and fifteen going back, rural metro has held our inpatient transfers. These are patients that are in the hospital on the floor that deemed necessary for a higher level of service, that need to be transferred out of our hospital to a hospital that has accepted these patients as need of these services. Twenty-seven percent of the time, they were unavailable, and the transfer was delayed up over two hours. Some of them as high as four hours and more. We find this to be unacceptable. Similarly, for our emergency room services, we looked at the data going back to the past year, and the, again, the same type of thing, we use a criteria of more than an hour and a half, and it was about ten to twelve percent of the time, they were unavailable to do that transfer, and it was delayed. Sometimes we have used open providers such as Trans Am, when we call rural metro and they give us authorization too, because they have the right of first refusal. Other times, they say no, and we have to wait for them to come, and it's a decision that they think maybe it's not medically necessary to rush. And so, now we have a patient tying up one of our six beds in our emergency room, waiting for that transfer. So, I would like to support this position, and I'm going to introduce Darlene Schrantz, her director of patient care services. Darlene?
Hi, Darlene Schrantz, S-C-H-R-A-N-T-Z. As Dr. Heidel, Mr. Gill, the board, and volunteers, healthcare providers, thank you for all you do, and I hope that what you're hearing is not something that is, you know, a business, I understand that, but from my point of view, it's patient care, what we have to do. I am responsible for the quality of care for the patients at Bertrand-Chafee Hospital. I'm connected to the community, I've lived in the community for forty-three years, and all forty-three of those years, I've been a nurse at Bertrand-Chafee. It's only been a hospital for sixty-nine, but we won't get into that. Long and short of it is, I want you to know that of the utmost importance to me and to the nurses and to the doctors at Bertrand-Chafee Hospital is that when we do what we can, and we are a small rural community hospital, the best thing we do is we suscitate and stabilize and give a person a chance to go into the city where they have services that we can't provide. We're not going to do open-heart surgery at Bertrand-Chafee Hospital, we're not going to do brain surgery, and there is orthopedics and things that we can't do. So, when we stabilize somebody and we call rural metro, it isn't because we don't want to keep that person at Bertrand-Chafee, it's they need to be someplace else. It's been deemed necessary for that person to get better care. And I want better care for our patients. It's not, I'm not looking, I'm looking for that person's best interest, for the community's best interest. I'm very proud of our hospital, I'm proud of where it's been and where it's going, and I always want more. I always want more from my nurses, I want more from the providers, I always want people to take up the next step to do better. Rural metro isn't doing that for me right now, it's not doing that for our hospital, it's not doing it for my patients, and it's not doing it for our community. So, I do support the idea of having Mercy Flight ambulance service, but I believe they have the same philosophy in the same direction that I want to go in for our patients and our community, so I support their position for being our ambulance service. Any questions? Yes?
So, the hospital received the letter from rural metro around July twenty-ninth...
That's right.
...terminating the contract on around August twenty-ninth.
Correct.
So, between August twenty-ninth and now, has rural metro been available to take any calls out of the hospital?
It has.
Do you know approximately what percentage?
I don't know the number, I know there's been days where, a very important day we had was August twenty-second, we had a three-year-old drowning, and they didn't even have an ambulance at our hospital or crew scheduled for the hospital that day. Pretty sad.
And by what means have you initiated transport?
We had East Concord Fire Company and Mercy Flight came in and helped us with that. Anybody else?
This isn't your hospital.
It is my hospital.
Is there anything at all from this right? You can have a guy.
I don't know that anybody's going to top that, but finally, we would, Chief Denny Daines from the Springville Volunteer Fire Department.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Dennis Dane, U.A.I.N.S., I'm the fire chief of the village of Springville, I've been a member for over thirty years, and I've been the chief for fifteen of those years. I've also been a past EMT for twenty-plus years, and I'm here tonight to speak in reference at the emergency need within the town of Concord and village of Springville. As I speak tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of all the fire companies that are involved. East Concord, who was here tonight, Morton's Corners, who was here tonight, and Springville, who was here tonight. We have a very good, worthy chiefs' council that we convene quarterly every year. And within the last few years, there's been an increasing lack of support from rural metro medical services with emergency medical calls for assistance. Documentation has been provided to you to substantiate the lack of support from the Springville Control Center and the Springville Control Chiefs' Council minutes for the past four years. And as Chairman Gill said, doesn't want too much redundancy of what's been presented already, so I'm not really going to get into the percentages that were shared to you tonight to create this, I'll move along. With this lack of support, it has added to the workload of the fire departments under Springville Control by increasing our calls and hours for EMS. The lack of support from rural metro has only made it harder to meet the needs of our community, as stated by the hospital, the town board, and the village board. Also, there's a lack of competent communication between rural metro medical dispatch and the Springville Control Center dispatch office. I am an employee there at the control center on a per diem basis. There's many times when the control center has not been notified that rural metro is going out of service or going to cover another area, and also when they're coming back. Until a few years ago, the control center did dispatch rural metro calls within the town of Concord and village of Springville. We knew as dispatchers where that ambulance was every minute of the day. The chiefs' council has been requesting that we against dispatch rural metro with rural metro's representatives, and have been getting the runaround response from metro that we'll see what we can do. Well, doing nothing is what's been done to date. It's gotten to a point now where, when we know as dispatchers that they call in and give us an extended lack of service or no service available, the dispatchers send up memos through the emergency notification system, our paging system, that, hey, metro's out of service, sometimes it's four hours, sometimes it's eight hours. There's been instances recently where they've been out of service for the weekend. Those pages are sent to us as fire chiefs, so we can get our gears rolling in case the tones go off, and it's something we know we've got to do. We're a little bit prepared for when they are not in service. We're all volunteers in the fire department. We take great pride in the job that we do with our communities. And it's getting to the point, as everyone sitting in here knows, it's on this board, if you're in the emergency services as a volunteer, help is getting shorter and shorter year in and year out because of the mandates and constraints put on for training. People nowadays just don't have the time to donate and volunteer. We have a sixty-man roster in our department, we're down to forty-one. When I got in thirty-some years ago, there was a waiting list, I waited two years. It's not happening that way anymore. We don't have the manpower to facilitate a twenty-four-hour service in the village of Springville. Let's continue. I'd like to comment on a few letters that were sent out by Jay Smith, the regional director of rural metro. The first letter dated July twenty-ninth to the town conference supervisor refers to a meeting at the Springville Control Center this past March, where he states that the chiefs of every fire department assured him that their issue was not our availability, but the desire to control the dispatching of our vehicle when it is physically in our town. That March meeting, we said, we're not here to talk about your availability, we're here to talk about dispatching again. Nothing to do with that in that meeting. And then, the letter further down, he states, and I'll read that the fire departments are getting burned out handling all the calls, which, this statement is from the town of Concord Town Board Work Session Meeting of July ninth, which I made. I'm also an elected official as a highway superintendent for the town, yet in our town minutes and board meetings, there's always an option in there and an opening for the fire department reports. All I said was, we're getting burned out. Over the Fourth of July weekend, we were non-stop, and that's a weekend they were out of service the whole weekend. Let's see, let me continue here. Perhaps, you know, with not getting the right information as to our issues with their service from the chiefs' council is, maybe the people that he sends to the meeting that represent his company aren't getting the information back to them. We've submitted four years of documentation stating the discrepancies with their service... with their service. It gets worse and worse as years progress. Second letter dated September fourth to the Town of Concord Supervisor states that Mr. Smith is disappointed he has not heard from the town on his previous correspondence of July twenty-ninth, and to learn that the fire departments have chosen to support Mercy Flight Incorporated's petition to expand their operating authority within the Town of Concord.
I know you're reading.
Slow me down.
You want me to tug his arm?
Yeah.
I get on a roll, Tim. Okay, I'll slow down for a minute. I'm sorry. I apologize. The chiefs, and we don't stand behind one another. We stand next to each other in regards to this letter. The fire chiefs have made a decision to support both the town and the village to move forward with their respective resolutions mainly because of the service provided by Rural Metro was not adequate and responding to the issues brought by the Chiefs Council to Rural Metro Representatives attending those meetings. The third letter dated September fourth to the Village of Springville Mayor, this again states that he was not aware of the concerns of the fire chiefs. Again, this goes back to the issues brought by the Chiefs Council, the Rural Metro Representatives at our quarterly Chiefs Council meetings. Springville Fire Department, Morton's Corners Fire Department, and East Concord Fire Department have all submitted letters of support to both the town and village boards, Mercy Flight, Mercy EMS, the Department of Health, to move forward in a new direction to provide emergency care and transportation in our communities. Our elected officials have the responsibility to provide the residents of our communities with such and have received written approval from the State of New York Department of Health dated September fifteenth, twenty-fifteen, to move forward with this petition. The fire departments would also request the approval of Rumsfeld tonight so the Village of Springville and Town of Concord can move forward to continue this petition based on the resolutions of emergency needs provided by and for expansion of operating territory for Mercy Flight Incorporated DBA Mercy EMS. I greatly appreciate you allowing me this time to speak with you tonight, and I would hope you open any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Yes, ma'am.
With your decreased staffing, oh, sorry, Carol Staffel, a council member. With your decreased staffing, as all volunteer companies are experiencing right now, do you expect Rural Metro to be taking all of, I mean, your BLS calls when you are not able to get approved?
In the packets that you also have are the dispatch policies and procedures for each department. That's when they are requested to respond in those hours. There are ALS dispatch protocols-
I'm not talking ALS. I'm talking BLS.
Yes, whatever says in the dispatch policies and procedures, if they're available, because their contract states if they're available.
Sort of a backup, they're the backup BLS provider, too.
This is better.
Sorry. But I never, well, I just want to add, they're the backup basic provider, too?
Correct.
Okay. I do want to ask one more question.
Sure.
Same one I asked the mayor. Chief, when you discovered there was issues in your village or in your town, your Chiefs Association, I guess, you know, the village and the town, did you attempt to identify any other agencies that had operating authority in that area and reach out to them?
No, that's up to the local government, essentially.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there-
Me.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, Chief Daines, is it?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for your time and service. It sounds like you've got a lot of years in. One of the things that I had a concern with when I listened to the very impassioned speech, the very compelling data, is when there was a hesitation to renew that contract because of performance. I understand that. I'm from government. I'm from Wyoming County. We, like you, have a hospital that stabilizes and sends people off to the city, but I'm not hearing anything about competition. I don't understand the focus that there was one provider, and I'm hearing that over and over again, one provider that the group, the body present here, went to to provide service, Mercy Ground. There are other providers in the area. Why wasn't there a contact made between them? And I suppose that speaks back to the government as opposed to the fire departments, but that's a concern I have. I don't understand why that competition, the RFP for servicing dating back to two thousand and eleven. If it decreasingly provided service, why wasn't that, you know, in both clause in the contract where you canceled it? Why didn't you look for other providers? Why did you just wait for one provider to say, here we are, and we need a C O N?
Chief Daines, if I may.
Sure.
Public health law, Article Thirty, does not protect competition among ambulances. It actually protects the public health of public welfare. And the competition among ambulances thing is not, it's not a valid argument. That was actually a case that Rural Metro brought in nineteen ninety-eight against the Department of Health, and they lost. That was a C O N process, which is different than here, but in that case, the third department held that for purposes of public health law, Article Thirty, competition among ambulances is irrelevant. It doesn't matter. It's not a part of the question. That's what this proceeding is brought pursuant to, Section Thirty Ten of the Public Health Law.
Okay. I guess I was under the impression that Concord, the Town of Concord, was the one that was making the statement that they held the contract.
The Town of Concord did have a contract with Rural Metro at that time. That's correct. But as far as, and I'm jumping ahead again. I apologize, Chief, and don't embarrass me in that, but what, no matter how many people they contacted or how many people they spoke to in the matter, a number over the course of August, this doesn't change. They're still unavailable sixty-one percent, and there are no pending petitions from any other provider. No one else has volunteered to come in. No one else is, to date, no one, not that I'm aware of at least, has spoken, sought resolutions from these boards. These boards have declared, they asked Mercy Flight to help and assist them. We tried to facilitate that dialogue. But to the extent that we're now talking about competition among ambulances, I think it's a dangerous road to get into under a proceeding under the Public Health Law because the appellate division said that's not part of the inquiry.
Thank you.
Chief, thanks so much.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Chair, as promised and as you know, we have some packets for you. Mr. Trepek, would you prefer we hand them to you or to council, or what's your-
Okay.
I have a question for everybody or anybody who wasn't specific to any person. That's a good question. I've read something.
We have one more question.
Oh, sure.
We have one more question.
Brian Broner, council member. I didn't know, you were the director, you brought it up at the end, but-
Throw it to me.
Given that there is an issue of service and there's been basically no request for proposal, the contract wasn't terminated, the operation continues, under the current contract, why weren't other options explored? Not to the issue of competition, but to the issue of exploring all available options to seek resolution as opposed to one party breaking the petition.
I think that, I think that the July twenty-nine letters that were issued were something that truly shocked the conscience, the consciences of the hospital and the town. I think for a first-response emergency provider to affirmatively state that, we'll be there when we want to, and to the hospital, we're not going to be there in thirty days, I think that set those agencies into a collective, now, and they reached out to somebody that, for help and for counsel. In regard to what the law requires, I know I spoke with you, what was your name again?
Cheryl.
Cheryl, Cheryl, sorry. Tim, good to meet you. That the competition among ambulances, reaching out to other ambulances, that's not, they're not bound to do that. They don't have to do that. And what they were presented with in, where's July? July and August was a significant problem. Then they were told that these numbers, it's going to get worse because we're not, we're not going to, we're not, we're going to be available when we feel like it, going forward after July twenty-ninth, and for the hospital, we're not going to be there at all anymore. I'm sorry, Dr. Heidelberger. We're not, we're not going to transport for you guys anymore. And for their, from their perspectives, that's, I mean, to any enemy, that shocks the conscience. That was a tough spot for them to be in, and I think they reached out to the first, the first name they thought of. And Mercy Flight, as Margie commented on, I believe Mercy Flight flew their first mission out of Springville, right?
Yes.
Their first transport was out of Springville. I think that the long history there was a logical first step in inquiry. Hey, is this, could you guys help us with this? We've got to go through the chair.
I'd like to address one of the history with Mercy Flight. As it turns out, I'm the first flight girl from Mercy Flight back in nineteen eighty-one. I self-appointed myself that. And the reason I could do that was because my son was the first patient that ever flew on Mercy Flight. I was the nurse that I mentioned before. I got to fly on the ambulance, on the little Volkswagen Vito with the propeller on top, and they flew into Bertrand Chaffey Hospital. Mercy Flight has been part of our institution since nineteen, since September of nineteen eighty-one. They've had help pad in the back of our hospital. They transport our patients. They do a good job. Their team is cooperative. They come in and help us, and they keep emergency care. I wouldn't have thought of anybody else. Why would I think of somebody else to go to when we needed help and when Rural Metro let us down? Mercy Flight is the first people I thought of, and that was it. Plain and simple.
I think that the obligations of the hospital are to do best by their patients, and the obligations of the town are to do what's best by their citizens. And I think that the mission is, let's do best by the citizens. Let's, and we have to correct that immediately. I think, I think the town and the hospital and the village responded as quickly and efficiently as they could have here. I think it's, as many of you know, the reason why this body exists is to organize and manage the delivery of EMS services here, and you're all experts on this, that they're not. They're elected, they deal with budgets, they have all kinds of other stuff going on besides provision of EMS, and they were told, we're not coming anymore. I think it was a tough spot to be put in, and I think they responded admirably in the little time that they had to respond. Margie, I'll-
Thank you.
Sure. I believe we're wrapping up, sir.
I promised myself I would not take a defensive posture tonight, but unfortunately I think I'm in that place where I don't want to be. First of all, Cheryl, with all due respect to you, we did not say, here we are. Okay? And I will reiterate, okay, this is not an effort to take over anybody's territory, okay? If we wanted to do that, it would have happened a long time ago. Mercy Flight has consistently turned down opportunities in the Western New York area for twenty years because they didn't fit our mission, or there was another provider, or so on and so forth. And we could talk about reallocation of existing resources online tonight, but the fact is, that is not relevant to this proceeding tonight. That may be a conversation for a traditional C O N hearing, but not tonight. Again, I'll say, I have these people who have worked it for thirty-seven years coming to us for help. Not us saying, here we are. Okay, we've been flying into your health ward since eighty-one. If it was you, would you go to a stranger for help or to a friend? They're not EMS administrators. Austin, others like Twin City and Rural Metro have that experience. All right? And I have to say, and I don't want to say this, but it's integrity of speaking now, in Rural Metro's defense, yes, they canceled the contract with the hospital. They stated to the hospital that they would no longer, that they would be there for transfers, would no longer do so under the terms and conditions of the contract that they had in place. Okay? What that means to the hospital, I can't say. Financial, is it a financial impact? Is it continued response time impact? Is it the delay of transfer impact? I don't know. It's also kind of up to us to say, what's the nature of your emergency town or village? It's not up to Margie Ferrantino and Mercy Flight to determine whether they have an emergency or not. It's up to them to determine whether they have an emergency or not. But I could not turn my back, and when Sister and Doug Baker and myself, as the members of the corporation, got together and talked about this situation, we knew it would be controversial. We knew the bar would be here versus here. We knew that, because that's the case all the time. But in the end, okay, it was, we need to do the right thing. And the right thing is sometimes very painful. So, oh, yes, love you guys tonight. Just please just do the right thing. Let's get these people some help.
Yes. I'm sorry, Margie, that you fell down the defensive. It certainly wasn't meant to be. One of the reasons for my statement is because I wanted to put some of those clauses out there that have been discussed by lots of-
I know. I understand.
And I wanted it on the record.
Okay.
I happen to be the Sumsco rep, which means your rep as well. If this goes on to the state level, I want to make sure that a lot of these statements are out there. There are a lot of reasons for my bringing that up. I have very compelling information. I have no qualms.
I apologize to the public.
No, no, you don't owe me no apology. I just, I guess I saw your passion and compassion.
That doesn't care.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I apologize for my passion and compassion. Cheryl, we'll talk.
Mr. Chair, one final remark in response to, if I could be so bold to call you Cheryl. This has gone to the state, and they have approved it. They've determined that based on the petition that you submitted on September first, that substantial evidence exists for the emergency need in that area. Thank you.
Is there any other people that would like to speak?
My name is Jay Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I'm the Regional Director of Rural Metro in Western New York. That just means that I cover the territories of Erie and Niagara County. Obviously, we're here to discuss this petition for an emergency expansion of the C O N for Mercy Flight. Despite the criticism against my company, we have remained open to dialogue and conversation about alternative ways to provide service. Curiously, in the newspaper, the town supervisor cites there have been issues for over ten years, and as he's indicated, there was an agreement that was recently signed in two thousand and eleven. Again, I find it curious because we, you know, what I thought was, at the time, not, there wasn't a need for a face-to-face meeting to discuss contractual items. I'm learning a little bit more tonight. The contract language in two thousand and eleven was essentially carried over language from our previous contract, so we didn't, it wasn't like we tried to sneak in a new language in two thousand and eleven. My letters to the town and to the hospital are part of the record, so I won't rehash a lot of that. I did meet with the chiefs in April, and, you know, obviously, it's, I guess, he said, he said, my interpretation was, yes, there were concerns about some things, but the focus and the purpose and the takeaway was, you know, wanting to have the ability to dispatch our ambulance. Yeah. And I do have communication from my dispatch center that we are trying to work that through, and, you know, it's very clear why it is in place yet. It has nothing to do with trying to drag our feet. I think Remsco is right to ask Mercy Flight and municipalities how this suddenly became an emergency. You know, I stated in my July twenty-ninth letter and again, September fourth, we're interested in keeping the lines of communication open. We are still serving the area, and we remain pretty busy taking calls. The criticism over our service to the hospital and the nine-one-one center seemed to increase as Mercy Flight was building the helicopter hangar, which to me, curiously, includes two days for ambulances. It is a reality that the hospital requests are up. I didn't see pie charts for the hospital volume and how we're meeting that. It is well-understood that these transports require travel to the Buffalo area. That's a long-distance transport. Increased volume from the hospital with long transport is going to make any operator less available for the next call. This trend is not likely to change in Mercy Flight. I do have with me, and I'd be happy to show, you know, a recent example, September tenth, three hospital requests within a sixty-minute period of time. I do want to ask, what will Mercy Flight do when the fourth call comes out? There's been little discussion about the rest of the area that will be impacted by these changes. Our data shows that we transported over six-hundred-and-fifty patients in two thousand and fourteen that fall outside the geographic limits of the Town of Concord, but still in this geographic vicinity. Don't these patients matter? This proposal by Mercy Flight is created, is going to create haves and have-nots. Rural Metro wishes to make it clear, we are willing to talk about a different model of service delivery. The town and the fire chiefs may not like what they hear, but it doesn't make the situation rise to the level of urgent need to expand a C O N. This has come up as well, but I apologize. Did the town ask Twin City, and did they ask Trans Am what they could do? I feel that Mercy Flight has surely shown that they have a desire to serve the Town of Concord, but I don't think they've proven a need. I do ask you to read the letter to the hospital. I do want to thank Margie for clarifying this. My letter to the hospital, to me, is very clear. We're going to continue to serve the area. We're going to continue to take their calls. All we did was say our contractual agreement is going to be canceled. It did not change our service and availability, and we have still been working, obviously, since then. You know, to the council members, I just want to make the statement and the point. We were not asked to provide data or information as a part of these proceedings, but I would be happy to do that if so desired. So, thank you very much.
Do you have data with you that contributes any of the data? We've already seen anything that would create any point for concern? We've already seen anything that would create any point for concern?
I, well, I have data that I could show. I don't know how it compares to this. I can't validate the, the data that was shown here.
Any objection to seeing the data they have?
There's a red alert. You have five for this, and...
I'd be happy to make a note look to the chair.
Good evening. My name is Mitch Martin, M A R T I N. I am a community rep for Senator Pat Gallivan. Senator, as many of you know, is the former sheriff of Erie County and state trooper. So, safety is always important to him in his previous roles and his role as senator. Safety of the citizens. What he, what he would ask is, if this council sees that the, the presentation from the town, the village, the fire chief, and the hospital, if they, if they deem it valid, that they make an appropriate decision for the safety of the residents and the citizens. And that's all. But thank you.
Is there any other person wishing to speak? No other person wishing to speak? And now close the petitioner's application. The council will now consider the application.
Mr. Chair, I believe you said we have an opportunity to offer a body...
You are correct.
I am, sir. Everybody's correct.
Jim?
I'm sorry. Brian didn't have his trans though.
I, I don't want to tell Ms. Schrems what to do. Well, we're, we're, we're back awfully quick. I absolutely appreciate the support of the, the volunteer fire and EMS personnel here tonight. I, I see in residents this evening, the entire town board, the town of Concord. I'm not sure if that's a meeting or not, but we'll, we'll figure that out later. You heard from us, and, and you heard from Rural Metro. And, and what I discussed before is that this is not about competition, and it's also not about contracts. Nothing in public health law, Article thirty, says anything about contracts. The mission is public health and the promotion of public welfare and safety. That is the mission of the town. It's the mission of this body. It's the mission of the village. It's the mission of Mercy Flight. Probably the mission of, of Rural Metro too. I'm sure it is. One of, one of Mr. Smith's comments, and I, I, I don't know him well beyond what I've read in the news. I'm, I'm from out of town. But what I've read in the news, it hasn't been that great. It's not dealing with this. And when, when he talked about haves and have-nots, I, I couldn't help but think, explain this have-not. Explain sixty-one percent of the times that you have not responded. Sixty-one percent of the time, you're unavailable. There's no explanation of that have-not. And the town and the village already feel like they're have-nots. They, they declared that on August thirty-first, both of them unanimously, in, in lengthy, lengthy declarations. That, that thoroughly and thoughtfully thought of all of the problems facing that town. Haves and have-nots. This, this is have-not. Twenty-fourteen, and forty-four percent was have-nots. July twenty-fifteen, and what number was that? Four, that was forty-four as well, and forty-four percent. That's have-not. That's not responding. That's not doing the job. That, that gets you fired from Tim Hortons. Now, this is, we're not talking about ALS care. This, this is not good enough for anybody's job. And, and that doesn't work for the people of Springville and Concord. And that's why they're here tonight. Now... There was a, a brief discussion, a question answered. I appreciate your, your questions all evening, sir. And one of the comments was, was there a, an RFP power? Were there any type of contracts solicited? Or any, any other types of efforts made to contact, contact others? And once again, the village and the town are not required to do that. They have no obligation to do that. They have, they owe an obligation to their citizens, and they, they've done what I believe is the best thing that they could do for their citizens in this instance. And any discussion about contracts, any discussion about competition, it's outside the purview of Article thirty, and it's inappropriate on this petition, which is for emergency need. The only inquiry before this body here is the existence of emergency need. In August two thousand and fifteen, the current provider, the only one that's there right now other than volunteer fire and EMS, couldn't respond sixty-one percent of the time. From the time that Mercy EMS filed its petition on September first to right now, which, which, to, to anybody else here would have put you on notice that, oh, boy, like, there's a petition. Somebody thinks there's emergency need in our area. It's gotten worse. It's now sixty-five percent. From the time, the date of that petition till right now, we cannot afford to let this get to seventy percent, or to seventy-five, or eighty. At what point, at what threshold, over forty-four percent, that, that does emergency need exist? I submit, if you're, if you're one of the sixty-one percent that emergency need exists the moment you call nine-one-one. If you're, if you're one of the forty-four percent, emergency need exists the moment that you or your loved one call nine-one-one. You cannot afford to allow this type of conduct that's, that's gotten progressively worse over time. And progressively worse recently, and as of the date of this petition, to continue. That, that is, by definition, emergency need. That, that's the inquiry before this panel tonight. That's what this petition is about. The declarations of the town and the village say it all. And, and those declarations are entitled to a strong, a, a strong presumption of validity. I submit to you that I, I probably couldn't have said it any better than, than Ms. Schrems, or Dr. Heidelberger, the town and the village. They, they did a wonderful job this evening, and then I, I thank the, the fire and EMS providers as well. Sixty-one percent and sixty-five percent are the numbers that this body, whether you do it here or in executive session, should discuss. Because those are the most recent numbers, and they're not very good. And then no explanation was offered for those up here.
Just want to cover for clarity real quick here. As, as I have voted the last several weeks of my life and energy to this, okay? As many of you know, I know many of you, some of you I do not, or have not had the pleasure to formally meet. I've spent the last seventeen years of my life in, in EMS, in, in doing this, both on the volunteer side, commercial, and now not-for-profit side of the house. And in hearing on August twenty-fifth, and seeing the data, and seeing where we are today, Mercy Flight certainly has the opportunity, all right? As a, as a C O N holder of helicopter service, we have the opportunity to send a helicopter to every single EMS call that's generated. All right? But you and I both know, that is not financially responsible for us, the patient, or the community to do so. In this circumstance, I, I mean, Ms. Schrems, you know, alluded to a situation where exactly that was the situation, all right? We sent a helicopter to a call because there was no ALS service that was available. When this community came to us, it was all about that. How can we help this community? I assure you, our agency, as, as Margie has said, never went asking for this, all right? And struggled with the decision to move forward. But we needed to be the vehicle for that petition in order to be here tonight for this emergency need. So, I appreciate your opportunity to speak in front of you. I appreciate your attention during this and so forth. And I ask for your consideration on this, considering the fact that one of those people in that community could be any of our family members sixty-five percent of the time. Thanks.
There's a question.
Yes.
There's a question.
Brian Brunner, council member. The first question is, you've supervised our plato, both of you gentlemen, and a few others have spoken about the crucial nature of response time speed, performance requirements, and availability. Given that they are, in your estimation, so crucial, why do they not exist in any iteration of the current contract or the one that you guys proposed? There's no establishment of a performance standard. There's no establishment of the minimally acceptable availability. There's really no performance indicator at all.
Respectfully, sir, that's, that's not the inquiry here. This, this hearing's not about that. It's, it's about responding in emergency need. It's not, you, you're, you're talking and speaking in hypotheticals that are not contemplated by the law. They're not contemplated by what emergency need is, or even if this was a C O N proceeding, what's required there. That, that, the question has the tenor of a, a C O N-type question, which is, which is not, again, this is not what this is. I have, I have answered the question. I, I don't think it's a question.
There you go.
My, my second question is, if sixty-one percent gets you fired from Tim Hortons, and there's three opportunities to fire the current provider and the existing relationship, why haven't they been fired?
Again, you're referring to contractual obligations that, that is beyond the ken of this inquiry, beyond the scope of this proceeding, and beyond the, the coverage of the public health law. And I, I think they don't, they don't need to be fired. I think that, that Rural Metro should, should, should respond, and they had their opportunity, and they didn't. They, what response has the public, has the fire EMS provider been given tonight regarding why they got to get out of bed? And, and, and throughout the day to respond to calls when the provider that should be there is unavailable? There's no response for that.
G T Glass, council? You know, I, I've been sitting here listening, and I'm highly insulted that you compared Tim Hortons to this important issue. I think it's very irresponsible for you. Also, I feel that every time someone asks a question about where other services contacted, you're spinning it to contracts. That not, was not the intent of any of the questions. And I'm highly insulted that you did that. The sixty-one percent, granted, if there's a problem, let's fix it. But you're not indicating, there's no indication, why is that sixty-one percent? Were there multiple calls going on at that time? What were the reasons? Weather, what was going on, mechanical? So, again, numbers, I can tell you I make a six-figure salary. If I count the two decimal points, I make six figures. So, my biggest concern is with the patients. If you're not available, if those two ambulances providing are not available, is that helicopter going to be used to transport that patient? And if so, is that cost going to be transferred to the patient versus a regular ambulance? And that's what I'm very concerned about, the cost being pushed over onto the patient unnecessarily.
I, I think I need to...
Is that, is that, that's the question?
That's the question.
Okay.
Unequivocally, no. It's not going to happen.
Okay.
Okay? We, we were under the microscope in Genesee County when, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I apologize. Margaret Ferrantino. We were under the microscope in Genesee County in two thousand and nine for them saying, and it probably a legitimate concern, outsider looking in. But we're very cognizant of that, that we're not referring to ourselves. And our Q I process scrutinizes utilization of the helicopter, okay? To make sure it's appropriate. That said, okay, and I can share this with you, and, and I, again, in deference to the council, out of respect for all you guys, I'm probably answering a lot of questions that are more for a traditional C O N hearing than what we're here for tonight. And I just want to reiterate, get it on the record, as per Cheryl's recommendation. But I don't mind. I really don't mind. We have seen, and we have discussed in our medical records meeting and our Q I meetings, a trend in this area, specifically town of Concord, Sardinia, Springville, northern Cataracus County, of questionable utilization. And I'm not blaming the providers, but sometimes it was their only option. And the utilization criteria for helicopter says that if you lack ALS resources, and you have none, it's appropriate utilization of the helicopter. Do I agree with that? To, to address the issue for the patient at the time, absolutely. Do I agree with it as a long-term solution? Absolutely not. And that's what we're trying to fix.
And, you know, I've got nothing against you guys.
Oh, I know that, I know that.
I would ask to say, my only concern is that comp, my only concern is the cost.
Right. Oh, I agree.
Passed on that.
It's expensive, and a helicopter should not be utilized for a patient unless it's absolutely necess- necessary.
Can I just look for a second? I just love that. This is a very emotional and passionate discussion, all right? But it, I'm getting lost.
Oh, it's Italian to me.
Yeah, I'll have to bring my trans up to put you in. Just one at a time, and then we'll finish up. Mr. Glass.
Did I answer your question?
Any other?
Did I, did I respond to your, is your question answered?
Thank you.
The allocation of existing resources, I get it, okay? Article thirty, all this whole C O N process requires that the allocation of existing resources be considered, okay? But that's not for tonight. It's for another time. And I can tell you this, okay? To the best of my knowledge and belief, and I'm not trying to throw shocks here by any means, but Jay mentioned it, and I think, I need to make a correction here. Trans Am does not have a certificate operating certificate for Erie County.
That is correct.
Okay? But, and they've, we've been great, they've been great partners. I work with them very closely. It's been a great relationship, even after the acquisition by priority. They have, there's been a need for them to respond into and take calls out of Burton Shaker because there's been no one else. Where we, we would have to say, no, can't do it. No C O N. And I'm not accusing people of operating illegally, but sometimes it takes a village for these rural communities. And I think our experience in Genesee County and our experience on the airside for thirty-four years has put us in a position to understand what rural communities need. Probably maybe more than most, in, in my personal experience over thirty-seven years. And maybe the fact is that a rural community is best served by not-for-profit organization for many reasons.
And again, the question here is, emergency operating authority for, authority for a sixty-day window on a finding of emergency need. That's, that's the sole question before this body.
It is our task to file the traditional application as, as required. And it's just full disclosure.
Here, candid camera. Any other questions?
Any more questions from the petitioner?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll modify the records. And now, I'd like to close with this, with the petition of application. The council now to, to consider the application. Mr. Edel.
All right, Mr. Chair. C O N committee, having been appointed by the chair, has reviewed the submissions and recommends its approval. I so hope.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I have that one.
Oh, you have an issue?
You want some water, or you got one?
I'm going to say this, but I'm not going to type it. Do you want, I mean... The C O N committee, having been appointed by the chairman, has reviewed the submissions and recommends its approval. I so hope.
Okay, so we move to the second. One question. Mr. Brunner.
We've heard a lot of evidence tonight. We've heard a lot of passion statements, and everybody really has a, a horse in this race. Not having one, I will say, the petition seems to me to be born of a community dissatisfied with its current provider, and that has not exhausted all options within the current system to obtain a different provider who is certified or otherwise available. Like it or not, we live in a state that has a barrier to entry for the market of ambulance, and that is the C O N process and the C O N. This is a petition for something other than that, an emergency operating authority. There is, to the best of my knowledge, no clear guidance on when emergency operating authority should or should not be granted, and we've been through that. This case, in my opinion alone, seems to me to be a case where we are likely to create a ridiculous precedent, where somebody who is dissatisfied with their service can pass an emergency legislation saying it exists, and then seek service from a provider that is not certified in that area. And it's an opportunity to get something through the back door, for which there's plenty of opportunity to get through the front.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner. Anybody else with a question? What was that? Take the vote, vote for them? Todd Edel?
Yes.
Donna Barber?
Aye.
Dr. Villager sustained. Brian Brunner?
I, I, I'm abstaining.
Brian Brunner?
No.
Tracy Chalmers?
Yes.
Crystal Fisher?
Yes.
Gregory Gill?
Chair.
James Glass?
Aye.
Anne Lamb?
Yes.
Cheryl Mayer?
Yes.
Anthony Santoro?
Yes.
Sustained.
Carol Staffel?
Aye.
William Stryker?
Yes.
Marcus Sepanek?
Yes.
Christopher Zemrak?
Yes.
Call game, one name, multiple.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, as a result of the council's determination, the same thing, I have prepared a determination for the chair's signature, the determination reading by action of the Wyoming Erie Regional EMS Council, Remsco, pursuant to public health law, 3010 subdivision one subdivision C, September 23, 2015, and the substantial evidence presented thereat, the Remsco hereby approves the operation Mercy Flight Inc., DVA Mercy EMS, in the town of Concord and the village of Springville, for a 60-day maximum period commencing this date, dated September 23, 2015, with copies going to Mercy Flight, DVA Mercy EMS, to the attention of Mr. Trepas, and to the New York State Department of Health, to the attention of Thomas Behanna. Mr. Chairman, I would ask, based on the vote of the council and recommendation of legal counsel, that the chair execute this work. It has been executed and I will transmit that immediately to the council and to the Department of Health.
Second. Anything else, Mr. Edoff?
We are aware that the sale of Rural Metro and the transfer of ownership was received at the P.O. Box. It is within the authority of the C O N committee to accept that as a complete forward of the reference. As we've spoken, those numbers are the C O N committee. We will be looking at that, hopefully, to the target of the move next year. It is customary except that it's a policy that we forward that to all the C O N committee as a complete application, so we will review as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edoff. Just from my position, thank you very much for cooperation, the patience, especially all you guys who came out, the people that came out here. We really appreciate you allowing us to conduct the business the way we did and then being as cooperative as you are. Thank you so much. I will, I will wait for a motion. I have a motion to adjourn. Have a second, Mr. Edoff.